Okay, we'll call the Eastline Board of Education special meeting to order for May 11th, 2020. And it's about 5:07 right now. Meeting to order and as you said that the meeting is being recorded and will be made of the recording will be made available through our website so people can listen in if they have any comments. There's a place where you can make comments directly to the superintendent. So that will be happening. First item is approval of the minutes from our April 30th, 2020 Board of Education meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, Jamie makes a motion. Who'd like to second it? Anybody?
Second.
Yeah, I heard a second.
Who did?
Second it.
I did.
Lee, the leader, Kate.
Lee. Okay, good. And anybody have any corrections, modifications to those minutes? We were all present at that, at that meeting. Everybody, no? Okay, I'll, let's see, I guess, um. Okay, so I guess we'll just go around the thing. So Barry, do you, what do you say? Hi, Bill? Bill Derry?
Hi.
Okay. Kate?
Hi.
Uh, Eric?
Hi.
Jamie? You okay with the minutes, Jamie? She's frozen in space. And Mark Lee? Yep, okay, we had Lee.
Hi.
Okay. And Jill?
Hi.
Okay, I think that's everybody that's, that's on. Okay, um, let's see, we've got special reports. I see Mark, you're, you're online, so do you have some things to share with us?
No. Yes, no, more of the same. The world hit the pause button and we're just dealing what we've been dealing with the last, say, eight weeks or so. More of the same, we're struggling with what to do with our beaches and our parks. I'm sure you've read about that. We'll find out, we'll have, find a happy medium in the middle there, but beach passes are on sale. I would encourage anybody interested in going to any of the town beaches this year to get an annual beach pass. Don't rely on the daily passes because that's where we might have to cut off access and maybe only allow annual pass memberships to get in. There'll be extreme capacity setbacks on our beaches. We are pretty sure we're not going to have a celebrate Eastline this year. We're pretty sure, well, we know that Memorial Day Parade has already been canceled and we're not sure that we're going to be able to have the concerts up at the McCooks Band, Band Show. So it's a little disappointing. We're, we're all grateful to, you know, live through this and get through this and hopefully our loved ones too. And that should be enough and we'll resume life maybe later. And this is all, you know, this is all changing with the governor's orders. We might be able to do concerts. We might be able to have, we're hopeful for the Oyster Fest and, and I think that's in October. We haven't looked out that far yet, but right now it's all about just, you know, staying safe, getting some fresh air, but doing that and doing that safely and, um, you know, I, I know I'll be meeting with Jeff and, uh, tomorrow about graduation, some of the members of the senior class. And if we can't do graduation the way they'd like to, maybe at the end of the summer, we can do a town celebration, but maybe not. Again, it depends on what the governor allows as far as groupings of people. And, you know, it seems like a simple idea, but putting four or 500 people at McCooks Park might not be a smart idea. At least it doesn't feel that way today. So I'm available for any questions all the time. Send me an email, but any questions tonight, by all means, ask them.
Anybody have a question for Mark?
I do.
Oh, okay, go ahead, Kate.
Will the police have the responsibility of monitoring people doing social distancing and wearing face masks and?
No.
Things of that event?
Well, the governor, the governor did not give anybody any enforcement authority. So the face masks are only suggested outdoors if you're, if you cannot maintain six feet of distancing. So you don't know, you need to wear your face mask if you're on the boardwalk and you're following the line of traffic in a one-way direction. No need for face masks nor on the beach, nor on Main Street. It's when you can't get far, you can't get away from people more than six feet or less, as, as little as six feet that you would need to wear a face mask. But the police are not, uh, do not have enforcement issue, uh, rights or code to be able to write tickets, et cetera. They could write disturbing the peace tickets and arrest people for disturbing the peace or those kind of things, but it would have to go to an extreme measure. And so far, the prosecutors and the court system say, no way.
Okay, anybody else, questions for, for Mr. Nickerson? No, okay. Okay, thanks, thanks, Mark. It was great. I see we've got both of our Eastline High School student representatives on the line. Paige and Grace, who's Grace? I saw Grace a second ago. There they are, there they are. It looks like you're, you're standing, I'm looking, he asks you and you're in a closet or, oh, he must be on an iPhone.
Yeah.
So Paige, anything to share?
Um, yeah, I mean, I think pretty much same as last meetings have been. Google Classroom Learning is going well, from what I've heard. I think that, again, the communication between teachers and students is working out really well and getting in contact if you have questions and stuff is pretty smooth. So that's been going well. Um, the biggest thing that I have from being a senior is just graduation, still wondering what's going on with that. And we've had meetings with a couple of our, um, senior student members and then the principals each week to sort of discuss more options. So we're just sort of waiting to hear back from the state on what we can do with that. I know one idea that we had brought up last meeting was a car parade with the seniors, which I think that would be interesting if we could maybe do that. I know Mr. Susie had talked about like around the town and then maybe ending it at the high school where we could get our caps and gowns from teachers. So that was a option brought up, which I know a lot of people were a fan of, so.
Good, good. Grace, anything to add?
Um, yeah, so for the students that are taking AP classes, um, this week is also the AP exam week. So I think a lot of teachers have been doing a good job prepping their kids for the AP exams, especially through online stuff. So, and even College Board has been giving out like, um, stuff which has been good for these classes. And then, for example, Mrs. Buckley, um, is keeping the tradition of giving out T-shirt, uh, T-shirts for everybody in AP Lit. So she mailed out all the T-shirts for her students. And she wants a picture of everyone wearing it during exam day. So just stuff like that where students and teachers are getting through this very untraditional time. So, yeah.
Good, good, good. Any, any questions for our student representatives? Anybody? I was gonna ask if, if anybody, if, if either of two of you are having, experiencing online, real-time contact with teachers yet.
Um, yeah, Grace, I don't know, I haven't.
I have, um, been able to zoom with some of my teachers, um, just like, so I had a, a Zoom online, like optional class with Mrs. Buckley, um, for our AP Lit exam, like right before it last week. And then some of my teachers have just been doing scheduling, just started scheduling some Zoom, um, just check-ins, but they're all optional.
Okay. Okay, okay, good, good. Anybody else? Okay, and I hope both of you are gonna stay on, so when we come up to the item on, on grad, well, it's coming up next, the graduation discussion, you'll be able to listen in on that. So, okay, we all set? So we'll move on to our discussion action items for the evening. And the first one up, as I said, was the discussion on the planning or ideas, I guess, for the 2020 High School graduation. And I see, Jeff, you wanna start that off? And I see Mike Susie's on the line and I also see Deb, wow, so.
Yeah, and Henry Kidd has joined us as well. So thank you to the high school administrative team and, you know, Paige and Grace, thanks for being, you know, with us too. And we value your input with this. So there's been a lot of discussion. I'll let, you know, Mike and Deb and Henry kind of talk about some of the meetings that they've had. And there's another one, as Mark mentioned, you know, tomorrow, I'm gonna jump on that call and Mark is jumping on that call. And, you know, we're all just trying to, to work through this work together as to, you know, what's gonna be the best scenario. Lots of different things and ideas, you know, flowing across the state. Some towns and districts have kind of solidified some plans, most of, and many have not. So we're still in that ballpark of working through what we would like to see happen. And obviously, um, having a, you know, a live ceremony of some sort on the field was ideal and is ideal to the students. The problem we run into with that is, you know, the Department of Public Health and the governor's mandate that you cannot have more than five people in any social, you know, arena. So we're up against, we're up against that component. So why don't I, I'll turn it over to high school administration, they can talk about some of the ideas and the conversations they've had with kids, you know, where things stand. And we really just kind of wanted to update the board because I know there's a lot of questions going around and we're gonna try and solidify this, you know, over the, the coming week or two. And last piece, you know, we are still waiting this week for additional guidance from the state. There's more information that's supposed to be coming out. So we're kind of on hold, still a little bit waiting for that, that further guidance to come out to give us, you know, some thoughts and ideas around high school graduations. So we'll see what comes of that. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mike, Deb and Henry. Thanks for joining us again, all three of you.
Sure. So I guess first I'll talk about process. We've met a few times with the senior class advisors as well as the senior officers, the elected officials for the senior class. And we've brainstormed different ideas. I've also met with the ECC principals and we've kind of shared notes as far as what people are doing, what are some of the hurdles that we have to get over and potential issues that we need to take into consideration. Like Jeff said and like the district's been doing, we're really taking our lead from the governor and what we can and can't do. Ideally, the, the senior officers surveyed the, the students and what came through loud and clear was that they wanted some type of ceremony which involves walking across the stage. Paige, feel free to jump in if.
Yeah, that was definitely the consensus from everybody was if possible, having that in-person ceremony was definitely number one option, I think.
So we're taking the feedback from the students seriously. I mean, this is their event and this is their year that they are struggling through. So we wanna respect their wishes as much as possible. So we heard that loud and clear. The feedback from the students combined with what the governor will allow us to do will really dictate our options. Originally, we were talking about potentially having all the seniors on the football field separated at a safe distance and then running a graduation that way with, with really limited participation from the community. But again, the, I think the, the governor has put a stop to that, so that option's off the table. The, the next option, couple of options that we've been talking about was breaking down the, the ceremony into pieces where we invite small groups of students at a specific time. So if we divided up the senior class by the alphabet and said that, okay, from nine to nine fifteen, students with the last name, starting with A to, to B, show up in the parking lot and then we had security and we set, separated them to safe distance, walked them on the field. If we had the, the stage set up, we could have a photographer there and run through graduation. And then when they go and accept their diploma, then they would then leave with their family and we bring the next group in. That would be probably a five-hour plus event by the time we get through all the, all the groups. But whatever the time is, it, it, that might be the best option for our students. And I've already talked to Jeff about it, that he's on board with doing whatever it takes to, to make this a significant event for the, for the seniors. Other options we talked about where it's like a drive-in theater type graduation where people stay in their cars. That was another option. And there were a few more that we kind of kicked around and I believe the seniors are still collecting feedback from the class. So we have a meeting tomorrow to talk about a couple of things. One, to update the, the seniors on what the, the governor has most recently shared with us. Two, to hear other options that the seniors might have heard from their classmates. And three, to talk about a potential parade through, through town recognizing the seniors. I think Jack, Jack LeBeau, I think reached out to Mark already to, and potentially Dave Putnam to, again, talk about what we can do in concert with the town to recognize our seniors. There are some, some issues that we are investigating on our end from a legal standpoint. I talked to Jeff after our last meeting, we have the seniors, and asked about if we go past June 19th, what does that look like? Because technically, the students might not be our responsibility anymore. So if that's the case, um, what does that look like for us? And if it is a scenario where we don't have jurisdiction or there are no longer our students, how can we still support them with their end-of-the-year endeavors? For example, we talked about the senior dinner dance and prom, maybe combining that, maybe doing that at McCooks. If, again, depending what the governor says, depending on what the availability looks like, something. These are just ideas we threw out there. But the key was to work with Dave and Mark and the town to see what we could do to support the seniors. And then we'd also try and loop in the senior grad party group. So if we get to a point where it's out of our jurisdiction, maybe we pass the torch to them and include them in on some of the planning for what happens after June 19th. So there's a lot of question marks, a lot of, um, ideas and talk right now. Until we get a solid answer from the, the governor, we're still exploring options. I'm assuming by the next week or so, we'll have a more solidified plan and we'll be able to start coordinating with the, with Central Office and the town to, to nail something down.
We just, thanks, Mike, just one piece, had some discussions, you know, with our regional superintendents group, you know, about that idea of trying to do something, you know, in, in as late as August. The problem we were running to, obviously, what, you know, what Mike said, you know, students have, you know, it's past June 19th. But bigger issues, a lot of kids are potentially, there's students who will, you know, will not come back for, you know, late August. And what really potentially is gonna change too with the requirements from the Department of Public Health between, you know, June 19th and, you know, and August, given we're already talking about next year and what next year is gonna look like with social distancing still and, and masks, et cetera. I don't think a lot is gonna change. So it'd kind of be like putting our eggs in one basket to hope for some sort of a ceremony in August. I don't think that's probably the wisest idea. So whatever we do though, we do need to, you know, work with the Department of Health and make sure that, you know, it's, it's permissible. Groton, for instance, just gotta prove that they're doing, you know, the drive-in theater, all the cars. Nobody can get out of their car, but they come up and they park in the parking lot of the school and kids can, there'll be a big screen and they can view, you know, online, you know, kind of a virtual graduation, but they're all at least, you know, there in the parking lot. So horns can be blared and, and that sort of thing, but nobody can get out of their cars for what Groton's doing, so. So I don't, Deborah, Henry, if you have anything, you know, to add and then we can kind of, or Paige, you know, we can, we can go from there.
Just that I, you know, hope to do something that honors the, these kids and the four years of work that they put into their high school career. I feel for them and I know that everybody's willing to go to bat to help them have the celebration that they deserve.
So with that, any, any questions, any, you know, I was looking for ideas too. Obviously, we gotta work with the Department of Health, but, um, Tim, Bill's got his.
Yeah, anybody, any, any comments or suggestions? I see Eric is right, I, let's see, I, I saw, I guess, let's go Bill and then Eric.
I think, um, you know, certainly we want the seniors to have as much choice as, as what we're gonna do. But I didn't hear any discussion yet about the possibility of combining a, you know, recorded component with a either, you know, cars coming in, you know, paraded or the, in other words, is it possible for, um, the folks that would normally give speeches to be able to, you know, have a few words and have it all recorded and done? I know that UConn did theirs this weekend and they had some recorded speeches and looked pretty impressive. I didn't watch the whole thing, but I saw what the news covered. And then combine an in-person piece. And I don't know, you know, whether that would be the same day or whatever, just, I, I don't know if any discussion's been done on that part of it.
So we did talk a little about virtual and Paige corrected if I'm wrong here, but it seemed like.
Yeah, that was sort of the last resort option.
Almost a hard no.
Yeah.
But again, we, if the governor says, yeah, that's our only option, that's our only option.
Right, yeah.
But we did talk, so Bill, to answer your question, we did talk about that as a potential or components of it. And it still might be an add-on. So if we do create a scenario where we can get, um, the, the seniors to walk across the stage, we might, in addition to that, maybe video that and then put it together for a compilation and then broadcast over either the public channel or something. But, but the, our main focus really, what do the students want to do for their graduation ceremony? That, that was a driving factor for us.
Just one other piece. Eric, Eric, you had some thoughts?
Yeah, I, I, cause I'm, I'm where Bill was and I just wanna just drill down on this a little bit more because I wanna make sure, I know we're, we're all on. So what I was, this is exactly what Bill was saying, I was kind of envisioning, is the, using technology and then creating also the in-person part. So let's say it takes five hours and you could do it over a couple of days, but you record individuals walking, so they do get to walk across the stage, they get that part, right? And we have to spread it all out and it takes a long time, but it's worth it. We video that, we compile, we take all of those videos, we compress them into a, a single film, video. In addition, we have the speeches and maybe we, you know, I don't know if Mike and Jeff, if you guys need to have speeches, you know, it's, it's more about the students and maybe you guys have short speeches, but it's, it's more about the students. And then if everybody comes and parks and we have a big screen and so we can watch the graduation and each person coming across, you get the speeches, you guys can cheer. I mean, there's some element that there's the personal part, you're all together and watching a movie and it's a two-hour movie that we're watching together. I know something along those lines, seems like you get a little bit of both pieces, given the restrictions and, that we have. That would seem like, so I'm, I'm kind of where Bill was going. That's, to me, that seems like a good, I'll pause there and I have some other thoughts, but I, I, just on that part of it, I'd be interested in.
And one, one thing just to add too, that kind of aligns with that, Eric and Bill, is, you know, the work with the New London Day. They're working with area districts. They're doing a whole, you know, online component where, you know, students, you know, will, will do their speeches, will submit them to the day, there'll be video links, you know, for the community to see. So the day is planning on that. Also, where parents can send in, you know, messages to their kids, they can be put in the newspaper, they can be put online, that sort of thing, you know, as well will be occurring. So we already had our first meeting with the day about three weeks ago. So that's in process as well.
Other, other comments?
So I, I would be interested, just Paige, just, I know that the virtual part, you kind of were not, but what?
Yeah. I definitely like, that's a different, sort of a different virtual option than we had talked about. I think we had sort of discussed like a virtual graduation, not necessarily like a presentation, but I really do like that idea. Cause then we all, yeah, we all sort of are watching the same thing and it's that personal aspect. I mean, if it comes down to that, I think that that's a definitely a good idea, if we can't have that ceremony.
Yeah, obviously, it's, it's all, there's kind of what's ideal and then as we work backwards and what, as you work backwards, it's kind of what, what are the things that you're more willing to give up and less willing to give up? And going all the way virtual, sounds like that's not what you want. So what, what can we move towards the in-person as much as we can?
Yeah.
Mike, you don't know by chance where, and we go, we start with Groton, I'm just curious where they got their screen or what their setup is like, you know? I know where you, if you can rent like a big screen or how that might work, you know? Like, we don't have a big like scoreboard, electronic scoreboard that could be utilized for video or anything, but I'm sure you can rent them somewhere.
I have no idea. I, I just heard that there were a.
What does Park and Rec use for their movies on the beach?
They do use a projection screen, but we're talking about.
Not big enough?
Hundreds of cars, so it might be many screens. If you're spreading these cars throughout the parking lot system of the, the school, we don't really have big parking lots, other than that, go to Costco and do it. But it's a great idea though, and maybe you, maybe people can even be watching it on their phones. Maybe we're also simulcasting it so that you're, if you're in the parking lot, you're not in front of a screen, you're watching it on your iPad in your front seat. Assuming Eric can, can, you know, compresses this thing down to a reasonable amount of time, that is a great idea.
Anybody else? I cert, I certainly think that, um, Mike, you're doing the very best you can, Jeff, and I think you have to just, you have to wait and see what the governor will allow. And the thing I'm always worried about is, is that if we try something that is, you know, that, that's kind of, kind of on the edge, so to speak, we don't get to practice it. And that means keeping people, if you do something with cars, keeping people in cars, having any backup of people waiting for their turn to come in, for their, the group of five to get their diplomas and so forth. I mean, it's just gonna, you know, it, people will want to do, do obey the rules and do very well, but in the moment, in the, in the moment, I've seen, I, you just see the excitement and the enthusiasm. And things could get, you know, it could go in the wrong direction fairly quickly, I would, I would, I just, just because we haven't, and we have, you know, this, this is a unique time. So anyway, I'm sure that you will do your very best to come up with, with what's the, what's the most appropriate thing to do in going forward. Okay, all right. Okay, not, not, not a fun, not a fun time, but, but it is what it is. Okay, shall we move on?
Yeah, thanks.
Sorry, Tim, I had two comments that are not related to this specific, I mean, the same thing, just real quick. Two, one is, um, I've gotten some feedback about communicating with the parents on what's going on and, and maybe if we, maybe we've started to, but if we can give a little more communication to the parents. I know it's great that the students are doing it, but as we know, students don't always talk to their parents as much. So maybe if there's something we can do in communication with the parents. And then the other thing I wanted to is, have we given thought about awards night or anything with awards? I just wanna make sure that we're gonna do some, I don't know what we're gonna, can do, but if there's something from the awards, because we have the awards night and we have the scholarships on graduate, there's kind of two different awards. Any thoughts on that?
Yeah, so we are talking about ways to address the awards. Not sure what exactly we're gonna do, but we are, we do have that on our list of things to address. As far as the, the communication with the parents, I'm hesitant to put out too much information right now because if things change, it's harder to, to change. it's harder to change a message that you've already sent out than it is to, once you have it kind of solidified more, to say, okay, this is our plan. So we, we've been cautious on what we have shared, other than to say that we are meeting, we are planning things, we are collecting input, and we'll take the input into advisement, and then we'll make a decision and then communicate that decision out. So that's, that's the, it's been intentional that way to this point.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. So there has, and I don't know, so there has been communication to the parents that if they have, if they want to provide, so one, that they know that these discussions are happening, and two is that if they have feedback, that they can send it to somebody, whether yourself or somebody, to provide some thoughts?
Yeah, I've had a few people reach out to me, and we, I've shared those topics, like the, I can't take credit for the, the number one option right now with splitting up the, the class by alpha. That was from a parent. So they've been communicating to me, and I've been sharing. I'm happy to be more aggressive with letting them know they can share their thoughts with me. Again, this is a student, for me, this is the students' event, we have student representatives for the class, we have student advisors. I want to respect their roles and their input into this. I don't want this to become a parent thing necessarily, but I'm happy to take any and all suggestions. And if maybe if, if I do a weekly communication, I'm fine adding that into, to be even more aggressive to the parents and saying that they could reach out to, to me directly, like, put it, actually put it in the weekly communication if, if the group feels that that's what we need to do.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how aggressive we need to be, but just, just making sure that the lines of communication are open. I just want to make sure that they're open, not that we're soliciting feedback necessarily, it's just that there's the opportunity to provide, you know, very different in terms of, we're not asking for it, but we're also not saying, don't tell us anything. So it's more of if there's something, just to keep it open. Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Anybody else have anything they want to add? Okay, ready to move on? Okay, all right, let's move on to the next item. For discussion, as the non-expended funds from the 2019, 2020 budget, and this was something that came up, well, we've been working on this for, you know, very diligently for a long time, and I think it was Anne Santoro at the Board of Finance meeting that actually said we should provide kind of a detailed listing of, of what savings we have and by what, what, what accounts and so forth, so that everybody can see it, see it. And Marianna and Jeff have been working on that, and what I think we want to do here is to share some, some of this with the board and allow everybody on the board to, to really take a look at where Marianna and Jeff have gotten with the budget. So Jeff, do you want to, you want to say, start off here?
Yeah, why don't I, why don't I share my screen, Tim, and we can just go through that so everybody, you know, has it in, in front of them, and then we'll walk through. And again, you know, we've been diligently trying to work on, wait, host, diligent, trying to work on, you know, gathering up what we're going to be looking at for end of the year dollars. And I guess I don't have my screen sharing option, host disabled participant screen sharing. Hey, Jackie, if you're still on the line, if you can give me back that ability, that'd be great. But Board members, you received the, the copy today, so you should have access to it in, you know, in Board Docs. If I get my ability to share back, I'll, I'll share the document. But so in tallying everything, everything up, you know, we, we made a list based off of what we heard for feedback from, you know, some of the Board of Finance members, and put that together. We will send that off, you know, after, we obviously want to discuss it with the Board of Ed tonight and go over it first, and then share that tomorrow. But the biggest one, or one of the biggest ones on that list, I should say, is I can now share, let me pull this back up, thank you, Jackie. Is, let's see. All right. Everybody see that? Okay, great. So transportation was one of the biggest ones. As we know, we had 65% of the transportation contract, so that netted us 160,000 in savings, you know, for the rest of, the rest of the year. We are still negotiating us, another vendor that we use for special education transportation, you know, we hadn't anticipated paying any of those dollars, we might end up having to. So the number could fluctuate still a little bit, so we're, we're still waiting on, on that. Obviously, transportation for athletics, on their savings, we're not running, you know, the, the buses for that, electricity, water and sewer, there is some savings, mostly in water and sewer. Marianna, correct me if I'm wrong, I think electricity was about $2,000. That was one of the questions that.
Yep, I, yeah, there's, based on the last set of bills that we got that represented from March through April, the savings averaged about 200 per, per building or per site, so.
Yeah. Oh, there it is, 15,000, you know, obviously in water and sewer. Natural gas, as you know, Marianna had switched vendors earlier this year, so that netted us quite a bit of savings for this year, which helped out, obviously, and will help out next year in costs. Supplies, you know, savings, we'll shut down 100,000. Eating oil, some savings. Health insurance was a bigger number, you know, we had anticipated dollars needed for paraprofessionals as we're negotiating their contract for coming on to our health insurance this year. That contract has not been finalized yet, so we are not seeing the need to utilize, you know, those dollars. Keep in mind, you know, one family plan is about $20,000. So if you just have, you know, 20 people out of our, you know, 100 and roughly 120 or so paraprofessionals, you're, you're talking $400,000 easy. So we had, so we have a buffer in there, which helped out. Contracted services, 105,000. Nursing, for instance, you know, we're not paying our nurses right now. That's most of the chunk of that. Spring sports stipends, dues and fees, and then, you know, some miscellaneous items that, you know, came for about 20,000, you know, 200. Then the unanticipated expenses that we got hit with. So that's, you know, the special education tuition, cost of this year for the 550,000, and then pension and legal. You can see those two numbers there. So all said and done, we are estimating about $469,200 at the end of the year. And in talking, you know, when we presented the Board of Finance last week and our discussions at the board level, we wanted to use some of that to help offset, you know, the technology. Now, this would be for technology infrastructure to cover that, is we've got both the infrastructure costs as well as all the mobile device costs. So this would help cover some of the infrastructure costs, leaving us with an anticipated net savings of 263,200 that we can discuss at the board level of, you know, what to do with that money, does it go back, you know, to the town, what do we, you know, what do we, we do there. Just some notes to be aware of as it pertains to, you know, parents' travel, you know, speakers, repairs, maintenance, and paraprofessional negotiations. I won't read, you know, through all of those, but I will move on to the second sheet because there are potentially some expenditures that we need to be cautious of, you know, for next year, and some additional money that might come our way, or should be coming our way as well. So the potential expenditures, health insurance, the fund deficit, you know, the, from our old plan with that, no, still claim runoffs that are occurring. So it's estimated, we don't have a number yet, we're still waiting for a number from the town, somewhere maybe between 500 and 600,000 that we still need our portion, we need to pay back, you know, to the town. And we can pay that back over time, it doesn't often be one lump sum, you know, work with the town on that. And then obviously, we, you know, we have a pending, you know, lawsuit that's been going on, and then additional special education needs for next year, mainly one particular at Flanders, a special education teacher. Those case load numbers still are much higher than the other schools. We were dealing with that the end of this year, and we put a halftime person in, if you recall, for the rest of this year, but we really need a full-time additional person over there to cover that for next year. So maybe that component, and, and if there's any, you know, legal costs and some other things which, and compensatory services which could come forth, we don't know. But maybe some of that could come from the CARES Act funding. We are estimated to get 83% of our Title I funding. So 83% of the Title I funda, funding is the amount of 170,980 to us. So that could be used, and we don't know when we're going to get that, it's, it's sometime in next year. We, we don't, we don't know when. But, and Marianna, you haven't heard anything, right? I mean, I, as to when.
One of the webinars I sat in on said possibly fall.
Yeah, okay. So maybe that, you know, helps offset some special education costs or a special education, you know, teacher, or, you know, as we've mentioned, you know, we might need to go back to the town for a special appropriation if there are, you know, special ed needs. But that, that number is out there, we want to be public, you know, with that. And then there's the Governor's Education Relief Fund. Here, you know, this is an additional trail of money. We don't think, you know, the governor can allocate where he'd like to provide dollars, you know, that he has, but we don't think we're probably going to see any of that. I think that's probably going to maybe go to your more needy towns, maybe, you know, Hartford Bridge or whatever it might be, to help, you know, offset costs there. I don't necessarily think that we'll probably see any of those dollars. We don't know for sure yet, but we, we have no idea what a number, you know, even would be. So those are the two worksheets. I'll turn it back, and Marianna, Amy, Kim, any additional thoughts on any of those items? I'm going to stop sharing my screen, and we'll turn it back over, you know, to the board for any, you know, open discussion on, on those items. Do you see Jamie's got her hand up?
Eric, do you want to, you want to say anything? Um, no. Jeff and Marianna seem to have a good handle on what they expect back from the state. Just the, the one comment on the, the health thing, we might need that money a little sooner than spreading it out all, because it is an expenditure on the town side, and we don't have, you know, deep pockets on our side either. But I, we should be able to get you that runoff number. I'm surprised you don't have it. I know that it's not complete yet. So we'll make sure we get you that number for the health insurance runoff from the previous year. But that's all. You guys have a good handle on what's going on, and we're, we're looking to have some savings on the town side, and we're hoping that the Board of Finance will let us roll it over till next year so that we can cut down on the actual mill rate, and we're doing everything we can to keep taxes low here, as, as we, you know, face this economic uncertainty.
Yeah, thanks, Mark.
Any other, anybody have any comments on, on what you just saw? And I was, I was trying to get our Chair of the Finance Committee, Eric, you have any reaction to this? And Jamie, I just saw your hand go up, so I'll, I'll have you go second.
I'll go quick, Jamie. So I, I don't really have that much, I just, you know, I think this is a great, you know, really, Marianna, Jeff and team really drilling down and looking at this whole list. I mean, it's pretty comprehensive, and it's a big dollar amount. It, it's not just COVID-19-related savings. We've looked at all, you know, to be honest, it looks like the non-COVID stuff almost balances out. Saved a lot on healthcare and some other areas, but special ed was up a lot. It was kind of almost all balanced out, and then there's some COVID savings. So I, I, I'm very interested to hear what people think. I have some thoughts, but here, and let Jamie, who really wants to get in. So let me let Jamie talk.
So.
There you go.
My question is, is that I know we don't have a food savings right now because we're going to have a shortfall, but I don't see that in here as a line item, as an, is it supposed to be in here or not? Because I know that we are not charging for any of the food that we're giving out, and I know we're getting some dollars back, but not enough to cover what we're doing.
I did.
Go ahead, Mary, yeah, you said food savings, Jamie, right? I just want to make sure.
No, not food savings, food expenses, because.
So I talked with, I've been in contact with Chris Urban on a regular basis. He has been able to get quite a few USDA product at no cost to us. So we're hoping that he is going to maybe break even, or perhaps the deficit, unless something changes, Jamie, the deficit maybe won't be as large. And even if we have to maybe loan him a little bit at the beginning of the year, next year, assuming, you know, we're, we're back to school and operating normally, he'll be able to reimburse us back. So because, because he's gotten quite a few, quite a bit of product through the USDA and hasn't had to pay.
And then my follow-up is, is he doing the same type program up at Salem that they're paying their bill to us that they owe us, or is he that off the table for right now?
Yeah, I mean, the, they still owe us, you know, the money. Chris is still working, you know, with them and has set up the same program up there, so they're running just like we're running. One concern, you know, that you don't see on the sheet, you know, both the food service program and the aquatics program, you know, if we're not open for a period of time next year, or there would be a significant period of time potentially, there's no revenue coming in for both. Yeah, so that ties into Jamie, what you're thinking is, so we're going to.
Because it's not really a savings, because we still need to run the facility, we still need to clean the pool. I don't know where I just disappeared to.
Yeah.
I just, I, I don't know what's happening there, because I, it is, we can't just shut down a pool. It still needs to be cleaned and maintained, and same with the food service, the food, the electricity and everything still is going on, we're just not bringing anything in.
Exactly, and you still have salaries, you know, to, between the aquatics director and the food services director. But, yeah, so hopefully, you know, that's not the case next year, but we just, we don't, we don't know.
I just didn't see it on that sheet as a savings or as an unanticipated expense, so that's why I was asking.
Yeah, we, we didn't put it on there, we just, we weren't sure. Hopefully, we're in enough next year where we'll be able to, you know, to cover.
Make it back, okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
A question on the program we're doing this, this spring, is, were those meals, are those meals attended, intended for anyone in the school system or basically people that have qualified for free and reduced meals?
Anyone, Jill, it's open to anyone. We probably have some folks from out of town that come through that line as well.
And so were we, okay, were we mandated?
Yes.
Okay, so the state mandated, it didn't matter what your income was, anyone could, you know, anyone could pull up and get a free meal. You could either come, you could also come from a different town.
You, you could, well, we, yeah, we wouldn't know it. Obviously, you know, towns have their own running, but you could see somebody come from another town, there's probably some folks that have done that.
And if I sent my 98-year-old grandmother, you would give her a meal?
Probably, yeah. Yeah.
Okay, just checking.
Pick you one up for kids or, you know.
I mean, just, it's, it just seems a little freewheeling, and I know it's going to be a dent on our budget, and I think it's a great idea, but it's like we're a nonprofit. So I was just a little concerned about that. So, but if it's for everyone, we're mandated by the federal or state government, it's for everyone, then it is for everyone.
Yeah.
Anybody else want to have a comment, or, you know, I don't see anybody else, okay. Certainly, Jeff and I have, we've spent a lot of time chatting about this. And my, my opinion is, is that we have this surplus, or not surplus, but the set, the savings, and I think it's a very, personally, I think it's very appropriate to, to give it back to the town to help lower the mill rate for this coming year. The reaction I'm getting, at least to date, from the Board of Finance's meeting had last week is, you know, they're, 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 we're all trying to get this thing solved the best we can, and, and I think that they're, they're very, very supportive of the proposals that we've made. So I'm hope, I'm hoping that, that, you know, that that's probably, that, you know, returning the, the surpluses is, is exactly the best thing to do in going forward.
Can't we just save it for technology? There's no way in good faith we can keep it and apply it to our.
There's no way in good faith we can keep it and apply it to our technology bill?
Well, I mean, the technology is, yeah, I mean, it it's all in there. So in terms of the budget proposal that we presented to them, what was not in there was that how much more of a surplus was there going to be? And that's whatever the number was, two hundred and some thousand dollars extra. So Jeff, do you want to say anything?
Well, I mean, I I just, I want to commend the Board of Finance. I mean, they've, they've really worked hard with us this year. I feel like they've been part of, you know, all, almost all of our meetings. And, you know, I I feel like it's been a good working, you know, relationship. We have these end-of-the-year dollars, you know, if we can help reduce and lower the mill rate, I think that's an important thing, you know, to do. And they've been very supportive of our technology needs as well. And I I think, you know, we can find a happy medium with, you know, the eight hundred and twenty-six thousand and the the remaining dollars, you know, to meet our needs, help meet the town's needs and still get those, that technology device to set ourselves up for what we're going to need for next year. So that that's my feeling, you know, and I feel like we've we've kind of found a happy medium. But hopefully, that's how the Board of Finance members are feeling as well.
Yeah. Okay. All right, anybody, I mean, so it would be appropriate that we would, if if people are supportive of it, if we would have a motion to approve the the use of the expended funds.
All right.
Yeah, we did want to have a motion on this, didn't we?
We do have a motion.
Yep.
Okay.
That's okay. I'll make a motion to approve the use of the expended funds for techno- on, motion to approve the use of expended funds for technology and return the remaining dollars to the town.
Second.
Okay, good. Any further discussion on this topic or on the motion that's on the table? Okay. So with that, Barry, what do you say? Hi. Bill?
Hi.
Kate?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
Lee?
Hi.
Jill?
Hi.
And Tim was an I as well. Big, we got everybody. Yep. Okay. Okay, so that passes and Jeff, you can forward the information to Camille so that they have that because they begin their deliberations on Wednesday, which we'll be able to listen to, I'm sure. So the the remaining item is any follow-up discussion from the Board of Finance presentation that was made. When was that? Last, last week? It all blends together here. It was a, that was a Thursday, wasn't it? Yeah, Thursday. So Jeff, do you have anything that you want to want to share on that?
Um, no, I mean, nothing in particular. Things went fast, that's for sure. I just appreciate, you know, the Board of Ed support, obviously, again, the Board of Finance and the town. Now, it's just such a unique process this year. And, you know, I I am planning tomorrow to draft another letter for parents and, you know, and get some more information to staff out there. So, you know, again, things have moved pretty quick. And, you know, I think we've got some some parents and folks kind of sitting in the wings too. So I want to be clear as to how, what the process is, where the money, you know, is and is going and what hopefully, you know, our number is in. Again, the Board of Finance will deliberate, you know, this week and, you know, we'll see, we'll see where we're at.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments? I know a lot of you did listen in on the on the the meeting. And that was, that was great to have you folks there. That means a lot in terms of 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 our commitment, I guess, as a as a board. So anybody else? Eric, do you have anything you want to say?
I thought the, thanks. I mean, I thought it went really well. I mean, I think we were pretty clear. I think our presentation was clear. I thought they also asked good questions. I thought it was the best one of these that I attended from either, you know, the types of questions that were asked from the Board of Finance, I thought were very good questions, and I think we were well-prepared. Sometimes before those discussions, you know, when we're sitting there, I, you know, feel like I'm rolling my eyes with some of the, at some of the questions in previous years that we'd get asked, you know, why is something up, you know, eight hundred and twenty-six percent? Well, it went from one to two, you know, one dollar to do dollar, whatever, you know, it's up, you know, it's like, is that really, you know, it's, you know, these seem more, much more relevant. And I thought we were, well, I think we had a made good argument and I think we did a great job. So I I think it was good from all all around.
Okay. Anything else? I, oh, Kate, you got your hand up?
I do have my hand up. I thought you guys did a really amazing job. I was really, I felt like you handled it very professionally. And I like how you started out the conversation saying that these are human conditions and difficult times and the whole emotional component of it. And I like what Mike had said at a meeting, a couple of meetings back, talking about do no harm. And I think that really is bottom line at this time. And I think, Eric, you said at one time, we'll be remembered by how we treat people during this time and how important all of that is. And, you know, at the end of the day, I think that how we treat each other and how it handles at the end of the day, that we, you know, take care of everybody, everybody's fed, we make sure that their social needs are being managed as much as we possibly can, that that's the important thing. And the technology just drives that home so much. You know, it's like electricity, basically, we need to have it and we need to have it for everybody. So I thought that was really good. I really felt like the questions that were asked, I think so much of what we're dealing with is fixed costs. And we have unions that we're dealing with and utilities and that kind of thing. So an increase is just an increase and everybody has that with the utilities that we're dealing with. So and I think you guys did really well, so thank you.
Good, excellent. Yeah, I I would just say, say, Amy, certainly, they gave a outstanding presentation on the on the technology plan, which was, I think, very, very easy to understand. And and it was great that several of the Board of Finance members had probably heard the elements of that being developed in real time. And I think that that went a long ways to to make it good as well. I was just going to comment, Jeff, at this point, that I did listen into the impact of COVID nineteen on the ability of the state's educational system to reopen this this morning, which had the who's, the who's who of the of the head honchos in education across from K K twelve components first and then at the state as well. I would just, I would, I would probably pass along some of the findings that, or some of the statements that I heard from that discussion. In particular, what the epidemiologist, the head public of public health official for the state of Connecticut, and he basically said that he is predicting a second wave in the fall. And the the general consensus, what I heard was it's going to be a hybrid model of onsite and distance and and distant learning. I I I just don't, I, you know, just based upon what I was hearing from all of those folks and where their their thinking is that it is, it is going to just continue on. And they're very concerned about the number of students on a bus. And they're very concerned about number of students in a classroom and the number of students involved in a program. So what that all means, you know, I just, you know, a lot of people are doing a lot of, a lot of of thinking. And they're all, and then the other point was, which I thought, I think it was Fran Rabenowitz, I think that's her name, the head superintendent person. You know, the concern about that, how to reach and engage every child and the difficulties it is they're having with the distant learning model, trying to get everybody to be engaged, it's just really, really hard. And so that children, there will be children that will be falling behind. And that was another major concern that they were, so anyway, and it just, I I, it probably is worth worth passing along some of those those elements that we heard from that discussion.
Yeah, one other piece to add to that too about, you know, with colleges, talked about, you know, post-secondary. And there's the idea next year of colleges, you know, if they're in session and they stop during Thanksgiving, they stay closed until January. There isn't a coming back after Thanksgiving. So there's a longer period of time, you know, within that. So I don't know, that could be something that comes to fruition for school districts as well. So I think what Tim said, it would all depend on, you know, where where things stand. But I, after hearing that this morning, I was very concerned about, you know, busing. You know, we have a select number of buses. Maybe many parents would be willing and we'd have to survey, you know, to drive their kids. But we're still mandated by law to provide, you know, busing if necessary. But if you, you know, one bus can accommodate roughly, you know, that's back seventy kids. You know, if you have to social distance, you'd have to have like, you know, one student a seat. And then, you know, across the way, you know, two seats back and others, it'd just be, be like maybe fifteen or twenty kids on a bus potentially. So just think about the numbers there in trying to get kids to school and how that would work. So more to come on that. We'll be, we'll be working through it and waiting for more.
Okay. Okay, so with that, then that concludes the discussion action items for the evening and administration reports. Jeff, anything more to add?
Oh, well, one was the 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 panel component that you just mentioned, Tim. Just one other one, working through getting staff first back into the building to collect, into the buildings to collect the other personal items. And also, you know, they might have a student sweatshirt or, you know, something, a student belonging that maybe is in a closet or in their desk or whatever it might be. Kind of, or help organize that. So then custodians can come in and bag and tag items from desks. And those items can then be brought to a designated location like the gym cafeteria or, you know, in the high school, you know, the atrium maybe, for parents to then come and pick up. So we're building, you know, the timeline around that. We're looking at right after Memorial Day for staff to come in, teachers to come in, you know, the twenty-sixth to the twenty-ninth. And then really the beginning, the first of June, allow, you know, families and parents with designated times to come in and to the front door, base their front door in the gym or whatever it may be, and and gather their their items. You know, the end of the school year. So that's our plan right now. We're working through that this week and we'll have that rolled out. That's, that's about it for now. We'll keep you posted on some of the other things. You know, just one additional piece we passed along, it's a group called the Masketeers. You know, former parent and a couple of parents that are making masks. And high school's going to work with them. I talked to Mike Susie about it. One of the former parents, they're potentially going to make masks for every, I could say, you know, ELHS or twenty-twenty across the, on the front of it. So just another tangible item of some sort that if necessary, you know, you need to wear them, they can have those on as well with their capping gown. Just working on little things like that. That's it for now.
Okay, good. Amy?
Yeah, I I apologize. My my internet has been shady all day, so hopefully you'll be able to hear me. I'll be really quick. First thing, as I had mentioned in the weekly update in regards to, we originally had May twenty-second scheduled as a professional development day. And we spoke with our Teachers Association President Scott Mahon in regards to making that a, the student day. Since we are ending our school year on June nineteenth, feeling as though maintaining the cycle for parents is pretty important and also keeping that consistency for our staff as well. So that is something that we are looking to change for May twenty-second. Also, the other piece I just want to give you is the State Department has decided normally students would have taken the school day SAT this spring. And some families count on that school day SAT as one of their opportunities for students to take the SAT. So the State Department did announce this week that they will be paying for the class of twenty-twenty-one, one take of the SAT in the fall. And the students, we have the option, we're going to have the option as a district to decide to either, actually, the students get to via College Board to decide if they want to use it for a weekend SAT administration or we could choose to offer it during the school day as administration. So that is something that the State Department is funding for our class of twenty-twenty-one. So that came out this week. And then just lastly, I sent you the results of the secondary student survey. As you know, that's one of the things we're trying to do, a three-site tiered cycle of feedback. We surveyed parents, we surveyed staff, and next we're doing staff. And then we'll go around and we'll cycle through again. We will survey parents again, we'll survey students and we'll survey staff as we go through the week. So those are posted on our website, the district-wide, and then we provided you as a board building level data. But you can have that. And just thank you, thank you again. It was actually very comforting at the Board of Finance meeting to see several of your names on the box as I was presenting, knowing that you were there. So again, it's really, the support is greatly appreciated. And now that we're pretty excited over the next coming weeks, just so you know, one of the things I'll be doing is beginning to organize, possibly start of June, meetings to bring possibly our curriculum instructional leaders and curriculum fellows together to begin the discussion around that blended learning framework and the development and trying to figure out a good schedule for that. So that's work to come. So.
Good.
Mariana, I'll turn it over.
Good. Yeah.
Um, yeah, the only thing I wanted to just give you a quick update on is minimum wage in Connecticut. So there's a five-year phase-in, so we're in the second year of that phase-in. It's going to take effect September first. And that raises the minimum wage to twelve dollars. So that really, the bulk of it impacts our revenue-based programs, our before and aftercare and our aquatics program. Those are mainly the group that are at that minimum wage. So it increases through June first of twenty-twenty-three to fifteen dollars. And then, beginning with January first of twenty-twenty-four, it will increase based on the price index that's issued by the Department of Labor. So so that will mean increased rate, the cover costs for some of our revenue-based programs.
Okay, good, good. Thank you. Let's see, that brings us to, there's no committee reports. That brings us to board comments and future agenda topics. Anybody have anything they want to say? Jamie, raise your hand. Jamie, go ahead.
I have two things. One, sorry, I couldn't make it to the Board of Finance meeting last week. I was at a Miracle League meeting. I know that you have all been keeping updated with the beautiful pictures of how great our field is looking and how well it's coming along. We had a lot of discussion, so look for us to come to you guys to give you an update soon on Phase Two and Three, which is playgrounds and bathrooms and some lights and security, security issues that came up that we were talking about at our last meeting. But the field looks great. We're trying to figure out a way to do a grand opening kind of. Our discussions kind of sounded like the discussions tonight for graduation, what, how do you do it? And you don't want to scrimp on it. You want to make sure it's it's something substantial. So we had a lot of discussion about that, so look for that. But we're also going to come to you to talk to you about Phase Two and Three, our bathrooms and our playgrounds and stuff. Second thing is, is I don't know if we need to have a policy meeting coming up soon if we do end up going with devices going out to students and how that's going to look with security issues and them knowing that whatever they do is subject to the board scrutiny. The board can see everything they do. Same with it being a school computer on school grounds. So I don't know if we want to have some kind of policy meeting regarding that soon. But we should if we're going to be doing the devices. But that's it. And I, we didn't have a meeting last week, so happy Teachers' Day to all of you. I hope you all had a great week.
Okay, anybody else have a comment? Question? So Jamie, good point about the policy. We probably should be, Jeff, we probably should be trying to schedule a a policy meeting, even if it's just kind of an organizational type of thing. And I know that you've got the triple A's, sub B base, are we scheduled with that?
Triple A is Monday.
Monday? Okay, good. The other question I had was with respect to whatever, whatever gets decided about graduation. I suspect that we should, that will be presented to the board and that the board would take action on that. Jeff, you thinking that that's bad?
I wasn't, I wasn't thinking the board would take action on that.
Okay.
I think it's more, you know, we were just giving, we were providing an update and I think there was some good feedback. I think it's more, you know, we, we were just giving, we were providing an update and I think there was some good feedback.
No, 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 I meant, I meant when you, when you decide what your recommendation is going to be for graduation, will you want to have the board to say, yes, we concur with your recommendation?
No, I, I wasn't expecting, you know, board approval on that as an action item, Tim, but we, we can talk further if we want. We want to keep the, but we can talk further.
Yeah, okay. The only thing I was just thinking more in terms of our next board meeting is scheduled for May 26th. And if in fact, there was a major revelation that occurred around what we were going to do for graduation and you wanted to have the board say, say yes, or, or whatever, review that. We would, I would think we would try to schedule a, some sort of a special meeting for that purpose so that we don't have to wait all the way to February, to May 26th. So, but that's, we can wait and see, see how the cards fall on that whole, that whole thing. Okay, anybody else? Okay, so I guess with that, um, would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
Have one more.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, go ahead.
It was, I know it's not as important as high school graduation, but I know a lot of parents in town are asking about eighth grade and fourth grade. And I do, I mean, it's not as important as the high school, but to a lot of parents, it's equally important.
Yeah, we weren't planning, Jackie, or Jamie, sorry. A, an eighth grade or especially an elementary, you know, given, you know, the amount of effort and work in the social distancing component that comes, that goes into it. Kids will be back, you know, next year as well. So we weren't planning on ceremonies and that's pretty much consistent, you know, from what we found working with our regional, you know, counterparts as well.
Okay. All right. I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Lee.
Lee seconds it, okay. All those, thumbs up for, for motion to adjourn. Okay, great. And everybody, thanks so much for doing all the hard work that you've been doing. So with that, we'll, we'll see you in a couple of weeks.